First, I'm going to introduce myself. My name is Brad Wiseman from the podcast Real Estate and You. If you haven't heard it before, hopefully someday, someday you'll tune in. I'm also a Realtor at Keller Williams Platinum Realty and they asked me to do this moderation. And I said, of course, I've never done one of these before, so why not? So never did one before, not a professional at this, but I'm going to give it my best shot to be fair. And you know, make sure everybody gets the same amount of time as everybody else. So, um, so I'm going to start out with saying that, um, all the candidates were invited. All the candidates that are up for election, uh, the four incumbents, uh, Amy Kennedy, Steph Coker. I'm not sure if I said that right, but I'm going to say it. Um, Sean McCray and Ed Case. We have not, we got no response from, uh, one of them and the other ones have said that they couldn't make it, which is, which is fine. Who we do have in attendance so far, I'm looking to see if we have one of the other ones. We have an attendance, I know for sure Craig Stonehall, Val Delp and Megan Epler. They're the ones that you see together with the, the wonderful flag behind them. That's who is actually here that I know of. Is there anybody else is, um, we didn't know if Tammy Keener was going to be on. So I'm just bringing up that name. I don't see her on here anywhere unless I'm mistaken. Maybe I'll see her. Okay. So we're going to keep moving forward. Um, it's going to be, you know, as structured as possible. But like I said, this is the first time I'm doing this and the first time that, um, I knew the candidates are doing this probably. So we're going to, we're going to set up how this goes for the evening. Okay. So it's, we're going to start with a brief introduction from each candidate. They're going to have three minutes apiece. We have compiled the questions asked by the community and we will ask each question to the candidates. Now the candidates have had a chance to look at the questions. Okay. So it's a little different than some other debates. They have had a chance to look at the questions. Every candidate will have two minutes to respond. At the two minute mark, you will be asked to wrap it up and that'll be me saying, wrap it up. Uh, if we have time, we'll address questions from the chat, the chat box. You can chat in questions on the chat box, uh, on, on zoom here. And we will try to get to those at the end of the debate. We will also allow each candidate to have two minutes for closing comments. Okay. So that will be done at the end also. So what I'm going to do now is I'm going to pick the three that we see on the screen and we're going to go one by one. We're actually going to go from left to right, which is on my screen, but it might not be that way on your screen. We're going to have Val Delp is going to give us her, um, three minutes, uh, introduction. So Val, if you would like to do that right now, that would be wonderful.
Yes. Thank you so much. So my name is Val Delp. I am a mother of two, an aunt to four in the school district. And I also have a second cousin who is in the school district. Um, and I'm, I'm mostly running for them because I'm concerned about the future of, of the way education is being taught in Wilson School District. I also believe that it's, it's an elected official's responsibility to represent the voices of the community. And it has become very apparent over the last few months that many voices in this community no longer feel that they have representation by the majority of the board. Um, I'm not a politician, nor do I aspire to be one. But our children are our most precious community members. And I will stand at, stand up when it comes to protecting, um, their quality education.
Okay. Thank you, Val. We're going to go to Craig Stonehall next.
All right. Thank you, Brad. Uh, as Val said, I too am not a politician, never wanted to be one, never have been one. I am a father. I own a business in the area and I'm just a community member who wants to, to help Wilson School District. Uh, we've lived here since 2006 and I have a little girl who's currently enrolled at Shiloh. We were at Cornwall last year. We moved here primarily because of the school district. Cause I think a lot of people have, that's why I initially got involved was to prove to others that there was not an issue with Wilson. That there was no CRT, that we weren't following it, falling into a lot of the traps we've seen at other school districts across the nation. And that things were being run responsibly, but after multiple meetings with school board members, meeting with the administration, meeting with teachers at, at just various levels throughout the district. The, the first thing I noticed was that what I was being told was happening in the district was at odds with what was actually happening in the district. I would be told there's no race-based education in Wilson and then immediately I would be sent assignments or projects by students or teachers that proved the exact opposite. Uh, when I would bring this to the district, they would say that they were unaware and that they would take care of it. To my knowledge, none of those incidents have really been addressed since I got involved probably back in April. Uh, I'm running because after months of investigation, it became clear to me that either the current board was unaware of what was happening. They were apathetic towards it, or they were in some way complicit. None of those options were acceptable to me, so I decided that a change in leadership might be in order. Actually, the best part about this entire run has been the people I've met, I've met, man, meeting these two, the community members who have supported us. So, you know, we know that there is a, a strong community involved in this campaign and we just appreciate everyone who has had our back. So thank you, Brad.
Thanks, Craig. Uh, next up is, uh, Megan Epler. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Brad. My biggest reason for running is my three sons, two of which are currently in the Wilson School District. I want the best for them and their peers. We moved to Wilson three years ago because they had the best ratings for Berks County. Up until this past summer, I assumed the school board and administration had everything under control because this district has such high standards. Going to the meetings and doing some research over the summer, I realized something had to change. I am so glad that I met Craig and Val. It's wonderful to be able to share ideas with each other and have everyone's willingness to have an open discussion. And we thank all of you for your support as well.
Okay. Great. What we're going to do now is we're going to go down through questions that were, um, submitted by the community. We had these, uh, brought in from the community. People wrote them in and came through Facebook and different means. So I'm going to go through these. They are not in any order at all. Well, I guess we kind of just shuffled them around and came up with these questions. So, uh, I'm going to go to each candidate and each candidate will have two minutes, uh, to answer the question. Okay. And if they get to the point where they're getting past the two minutes, we will let them know and then they'll have to wrap that up. Okay. So the first question, uh, I'm going to pose this to, um, we'll go to Val right off the bat. Since Val started off with her introduction, we might as well just go that way. The question was, one of the principles of the political action committee that is hosting this event, no politics in school was one of the principles. What is your take on this misnomer and/or contradiction?
Well, I don't believe it's a misnomer at all, unfortunately. Um, we've seen several real examples of how politics are being embedded in English and history lesson plans at Wilson High School. Already this school year, um, we've seen examples of bulletin boards, um, with posters related to political movements. And, uh, we also viewed a video put together by the Equity Task Force that starts out with the first few minutes of it showing political footage. So, um, I, I believe that we should be teaching, you know, how government works. And the history of, of our government, absolutely. But political beliefs are just that. They're, they're beliefs and they're not facts. And unless a student is interested in pursuing a career in politics, um, I don't think they need to be focusing so much on politics within every subject matter. But rather focusing on skills that will help them to advance in the career path that they are looking to pursue. And quite honestly, the fact that political topics are being pushed so hard after we just spent the last year and a half. You know, having a very unusual setting in schools and getting so far behind academically. And we really had no conversation, at least to my knowledge, on how to get them back on track academically and then continue to go from there. So in my opinion, that's, that's a failure of our education system.
Yeah. 30 seconds. Oh, you're done? Okay.
I'm done. Yes.
That was, that was perfect. Great. Excellent. All right. We're going to move on to, uh, the same question for Megan. I'll say the question again. One of the principles of the political action committee that is hosting this event, no politics in school. What is your take on the misnomer and/or contradiction?
Um, I think the no politics in school is what I'm looking at it is more the one-sided views that are being presented in classrooms, um, classroom decor as well as lesson plans. Um, I feel like we need to have a more neutral stance when it comes to the classrooms. We cannot just have just one side of politics and not the other. It needs to be very neutral based. Students look up to their teachers. So that could be very misleading. They think, oh, my teacher is showing me this. This is the right thing and it might not be. Um, they can't, oh, having open discussions in the classroom is great and should be encouraged. It has to be done in a respectful manner. Heated debates, support of radical groups has no place in our classrooms. And I believe be kind is the theme this year at Shiloh Hills. And kindness should be shown throughout all the schools by teachers and students alike.
Okay. Craig, do you need me to say the question again, or are you good with it?
I think I got it. Okay. Um, and I, I actually appreciate that somebody asked this. I, I, I really gave it a lot of thought and obviously I don't think that that tagline is a misnomer or even necessarily a contradiction, but I do think there's a lot of confusion around what that means. And what I think the confusion is, is confusing the politics of our school district with politics in our school. And those are two very different things. Um, months of going to meetings, we, we've heard through, at the board meetings, we've heard, and even just in the last month, national politics have seriously influenced the current teaching plans for some of our teachers and have influenced policy decisions with the board. We've seen posters for Black Lives Matter like Val, Val said, which is clearly a political organization on school bulletin boards. And we've been told that the riots and protests in 2020, after the George Floyd incident had major impact on current direction of the board and the administration. So that's been said, I think, multiple times by board members. Now we're seeing assignments regarding abortion, white supremacy, systemic racism, and they're becoming more and more common at multiple different levels within the junior high and the high school. These are topics that adults struggled, struggled to understand and process properly. Yet we're throwing them at students who have not yet developed the critical thinking skills that are required to properly analyze and come up with an opinion. Our job is to teach the skills the students need so they can continue forward in life and have the foundation to understand these types of things. It is not our job to teach them the opinions that they should have. The opinions just tend to indoctrinate. If you tell a student what to think, if you tell them enough, they're, they're going to think it. I mean, heck, that might even be true for adults. I'm fine discussing any political topic with any member of the community when it comes to the classroom. But that's where we need to draw the line is at the classroom. There are a million ways to teach current events and history without getting into political opinions.
Thank you. Thank you. All three of you. Anything else anybody wanted to add there? Right? We're good. Okay. All right. So the next question, you ready for the next question? You guys look ready. You look ready.
We're ready. Let's do this.
Okay. Good. Um, do you intend to take politically divisive curriculum out of our schools? How will you ensure teacher, teachers are not pushing their political views on our children?
Who is this for, Brad?
What's that's for Craig?
Oh, okay. All right. A double dose of Craig. All right. Um, I, I guess it really depends on what you consider politically divisive curriculum. So if you're referring to teaching more historically accurate information to students, I mean, a good example would be the Tulsa race riots. I have no problem with that. Uh, our past should be discussed honestly, including the good, the bad, the ugly, all of it. We should not be shy about where we came from. It's been a process going from a series of colonies to the most racially diverse nation on earth. And we should not be afraid to have that conversation. Now, if you're talking about giving your opinion on what was right and what was wrong during those riots and then determining the student's grade based on their agreement with a teacher's opinion, now I have a problem. Uh, teaching students facts helps them build a framework for future opinions. Teaching students opinions robs them of opportunity to develop their own. To combat this, and I think that was part of the question, how will you ensure teachers are not pushing their political views? I would encourage the district to set up a formal process for calling out teacher inequities that penalize students' opinions or interpretations. I don't think it's common and, and I hope it doesn't get more common, but there should be a formal way to approach the teacher. Maybe the principal, the administration, something that can be outlined to parents so that they have an avenue for resolution in these things. So often, uh, the three of us talk to people and their biggest frustration is they feel like they're not being heard. They have concerns and they have nowhere to take them to, or they take them to someone and nothing happens. Giving the parents and teachers the ability to request an investigation into classroom behavior, you know, would absolutely empower them to be able to bring up issues that are maybe outside the curriculum. And I think that's a big part of what we're seeing is teachers teaching a little bit outside the curriculum. We all want the same thing. Consistency is the goal, and I think this helps the teachers as much as the parents.
Okay. And before we, before we continue here, um, I just want to let people know that this is a debate. Okay. Uh, the, that the candidates are, that are running here, there, this is a debate. If there's anybody that's watching, um, you know, and also the candidates within yourselves can debate too. If you have any disagreements or anything like that, you can, you can debate back and forth. You don't have to agree on everything, just to let you know, there's a debate. Just to make that clear. Okay.
Are, are we not making it dramatic enough for you?
I was hoping to see some punches. I just don't know. No, I'm just letting you know, it's, it is a debate. So if you have anything you want to add to something or you want to, uh, rebuttal, you can do that if you'd like. Okay. All right. So, uh, so that same question is going to go to, uh, Val also. Cause each question will be answered, uh, by each, each candidate, uh, and you each have, uh, two minutes to respond.
All right. Thank you. So I would support, um, a policy that doesn't allow political discussions or assignments in subject matters other than say civics or certain history classes where it's relevant. I would also like to see a requirement for more detailed course descriptions and, and syllabuses on the Wilson website. Especially if it's going to be on, um, something like civics. I think transparency and approaching those types of topics with neutrality is very important. I don't think it's necessary to bring politics into like, say math problems or English essays because there are thousands of other topics that can appropriately teach those skills without needing to bring those politics into the classroom. Um, and again, I would support neutrality training for teachers. I don't know if part of that would be something where the, maybe the teachers even have to say sign something and so that they vow not to bring those topics into their lesson plans unless again, they're teaching civics or, you know, certain history classes.
Awesome. Thank you. All right. So, uh, I guess we need to go to Megan yet to answer the question. And do I need to read the question? Do you, or are you okay?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Great.
Um, I basically agree the same with Craig and Val, um, with what they said. I think that seeing politically diverse stuff is fine. If you're going to discuss it in the right matter, once again, we're talking about the one-sided things. The recent American dream artwork that we saw, that is something that does not belong in our schools or in the classroom. I don't know how it got into an English class. Um, what Val said about knowing the different curriculums, um, different subjects that the students are able to take in high school. That would be very helpful. I remember in high school being able to pick my courses and I'm not sure where to find that, um, on Wilson's website. But that would be another thing that I think would be helpful for the parents to know what classes are available and what type of things will be taught in those classes.
Great. Awesome. And there was another question that came through. Um, somebody had asked, um, this is a question that I see that you can't see. Somebody asked, um, why are we not giving the other board members, um, a chance to answer these questions? We're only doing this for people that are up for election, for the, for the seats that are open for election. Uh, so if there's other board members that are on, um, this, this zoom, they're not, they don't have the same opportunity because they're not up for election. Does that make sense? Okay. Good. All right. So the next question is, what about students that are old enough to vote? What about adding in politics to help them vote? And let's go with, uh, since Megan has the microphone, let's go with that.
Okay. Um, students who are old enough to vote, um, I think that certain things are taught in school. And then there's all the other things that are just taught at home. Parents and caregivers, that might be one thing that they would step up and teach them how to vote. As far as resources goes, I would have no problem with having help to learn how to register to vote, how to find your voting poll, um, things like that, I think would be great resources to have, whether in the guidance office or the library to point them in the right direction, but keeping it neutral, not saying this is who you should go vote for, or this is the reason why this, let the students think it out on their own. Find ways to, you know, find information on all candidates that are running, that they can form their own opinions. Because we all don't have the same opinion, which is completely fine. It'd be a pretty boring world if we were all completely the same. So I think that that is an important skill for kids to learn, you know, as they're finishing up their senior year. You know, critical thinking and becoming adults and getting the chance to vote.
Great. All right. We'll just keep moving the microphone down. Craig, you want to answer that one?
Yeah. I mean, the, the idea of making the voting age 18 is that our assumption as a society is that by this age, you have developed the necessary critical thinking skills to be able to go out and find the information you need yourselves. Now, obviously I think we're talking about that group of students that maybe hasn't quite finished high school yet. I'm, I'm sure it's not a huge group, but it's a real, um, but if we're properly teaching concepts like the Socratic method, um, they'll know how to ask questions in order to find information. If we properly teach students how to search for information, they can perform their own investigations. It's all about giving them the tools for success, not telling them what to think. Beyond that, they're welcome to ask parents, teachers, trusted adults outside the classroom and, and should be encouraged to have vigorous debates about, you know, participating in, you know, the search for truth. There's, there's nothing stopping them from discussing these topics with any of the people in the school district. We, me, I shouldn't say we, me, I just don't think it has any place in the actual classroom. I mean, forget for a moment that some of the other students may not be 18 yet, but the bottom line is you are still in high school. It's not the proper setting, but it doesn't mean that you can't sit down after school with that same teacher and have a conversation, especially if it's someone you trust or you value their opinion. And, and I think that's where the dividing line is, you know, building those relationships, finding people that you can rely on. You know, getting engaged with people that, that you trust, what they have to say is part of becoming an adult. And that's also part of what it is to become a voter. You need to learn how to make these decisions on your own. And if you're not there yet, that's a scary concept that we have people that are voting that don't even know how to find information. So, you know, what I would really say the biggest thing here is that, is the lasting negative impact that, that can happen if we're teaching students what to think, i- is going to carry on into their adult life. If they don't figure out how to formulate their own opinions as students, they're going to be looking to others forever. And that is not the type of adults we want in our society, at least not the type that I would like to see. So we want to give them the ability to be self-actualized and that's, that's an important skill.
Okay. Just about ready to tell you to wrap it up. That was good. All right. Uh, Val, go ahead.
So, um, I guess I slightly have a different approach than maybe Craig was talking about. So I'm going to try to make it interesting here.
Now we're talking. Now it's a debate.
I, I look at it as though, um, I think it is appropriate to teach, um, maybe in 12th grade civics class, political science, um, maybe even having one unit focused on, um, you know, in all 12th grade history classes on voting. Teaching them kind of what Megan was saying, teaching them how to research candidates, how to vote. Um, you know, who you're voting, what you're voting for, like what political positions there are, um, different types of elections. And teaching them how to research candidates and decide, you know, who they align with. I, I could see that being placed into, like I said, 12th grade specifically. Cause hopefully at that point, they've, they've learned a lot of those critical thinking skills from the other classes. That they can start to, to research that and, and figure out where they stand. And, but, but I think that has to be done without, but a teacher influencing their thoughts. They, they have to be taught, this is how you can figure out who you align with, but not sway them towards one candidate or the other.
Okay. Great. All right. We'll get the next question here. Um, this is a question, obviously it's about somebody's child that's, uh, in school. So take it from that context. After what our daughter had experienced with two teachers telling my daughter that her opinion needs to align with theirs. What is your stance on teachers taking a neutrality class? Uh, we'll, we'll go to, um, Craig. Since Val just answered and beat you up a little bit.
Um, I was actually at the school board meeting when the neutrality class was initially proposed. And I think it might be one of the best ideas I've heard in, in some time. Uh, we talk a lot about continuing education for teachers and this would be the type of program that would help them to navigate difficult topics. And, and in a lot of ways, I think it would be very positive for the teachers. We talk about the students all the time. The teachers are often overlooked when a difficult topic comes up. A lot of times a teacher will feel compelled to answer and the basis for that answer will come from maybe opinions or biases if they're unprepared. Teaching them how to use questions and other skills to push the student to do research and determine their own opinions would not only create an opportunity for the student to grow, but also give the teachers the skills necessary to avoid unduly influencing a child's growth. The best teachers I've ever had didn't tell me what their opinions were. They taught me how to form my own. And I actually, when I was thinking about this today, I had a teacher in college who, um, we had multiple, multiple meetings outside of class. And he was a philosophy teacher and I've realized today that I don't think he ever once told me his opinion. And he was one of the most impactful people I ever worked with. It was just a lot of questioning, a lot of resources, a lot of just helping me determine my own path. And I think that's important. And I think that's a, that's a skill that a lot of teachers would value.
Okay. So Megan.
I am all for neutrality, neutrality training. Um, I think it'd be amazing for the students to have an open discussion in the classroom in a respectful manner without this, I'm right, you're wrong attitude. We are allowed to have different opinions and there is no right or wrong. It's the person's opinion for a reason and you can be respectful of that. And when you have discussions, that's where they're going to get the critical thinking skills by bouncing ideas off of one another. They're going to be able to build the skills they need for later in life. They do need to make their own decisions and having the teachers just kind of do what you're doing, be a moderator. Just sit there and give them the tools that they need, resources, which Wilson has a ton of resources. So I don't think that we're lacking in that in this district. But I, I really think that that would be helpful for the teachers and for some teachers, I feel like they would feel more comfortable being able to be neutral and not feeling like they have to have an opinion about something. You know, teachers, administration, anyone can get bullied at that point. So they, I think that they would like neutrality across the board. So, thank you.
And bring it back down to Val. I think we need to invest in three microphones next time. What do you think?
That would be great. So, um, I, I would definitely love to see neutrality training for teachers and all staff, administration, everyone, um, who works in the school district. I, I think we have to remember that children are much more vulnerable than adults on topics that are opinion-based. Again, going back to, they don't necessarily have all of the critical thinking skills to make opinions on their own. So it's much easier for them to just go with what they're told. I, I, but I, and I definitely don't think it's right or fair to, to tell any child that they are wrong for what they believe in. Um, we should definitely be focusing on boosting self-esteem and individual, individuality at this age and not trying to squash it. Thank you.
Seems like you're all in the same, same agreement there with neutrality. Something that we, uh, we won't like, we'd like that training. Okay. We're going to get into a different topic here. This is probably one of the most, um, I'm going to say, one of the most heated topics of, uh, that we, we have. And, um, so we're going to, we're going to go right into it, dive right into it. So, uh, the topic of CRT has been brought up many times and there's a question here that is going to address that. And then you guys can answer it and you'll have two minutes, just like you have for each, each of the others. The topic of CRT and equity in schools brings about the importance of discourse. How do you view teaching opposing viewpoints in the classroom? Is it wise to teach students how to critically think? Who wants to take that one first?
I'll go.
Since the microphone's there, it's probably easier that way.
Sure. So I definitely think it's okay to teach opposing viewpoints in the appropriate setting. So like on a debate team, that would be a great thing to do there. But only as long as both viewpoints are fairly represented. Um, and critical thinking is definitely a skill that should be introduced and taught in English classes. But again, there are thousands of other topics that can be used to teach this skill. Um, and I don't think it's necessary to use such divisive topics to teach them. You know, and create a scenario where students can get hurt, bullied, or even lose friends. You know, if you had, had attended the last board meeting, you may have heard a student speak on her experience on, uh, some recent critical thinking. on her experience on some recent critical thinking assignments in her English class. And, you know, it's created a lot of conflict for her among her friend group, which is really sad and disappointing. You know, and she had a really great group of friends, and now she's, you know, having some problems there. So her experience is a prime example of how, you know, these topics to teach critical thinking can be emotionally and socially damaging to our children. And they're really just mostly here just to learn and do well in school. And they really don't need that, you know, that extra drama, if you will, in their life. And lastly, I'll say for a school that has a zero tolerance policy on bullying, you know, this type of assignment is clearly setting kids up to either be victims or to take part in bullying, and that's not a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Craig, you want to go next? Do you need the question again, or are you familiar with the question?
I think I'm good on the question, and I actually, I met a woman yesterday, and the conversation of critical race theory came up when we were talking about the Wilson schools, and I asked her what she thought about it. And she told me that she was very pro CRT. So she explained that she thought we should be teaching more history that is focused on racial injustices of our past and stated that our nation's history and its teaching was not was not really being represented properly without CRT. And my response was that that's not really what CRT is, in my opinion. And I realized that as two adults having a conversation, we couldn't even agree on what CRT was. Instead of a fruitless discussion about who was right, I kind of shifted the discussion and said that instead of arguing about what this is, perhaps what we should all be talking about is focusing on how it's currently being implemented and taught. So I told her about, you know, students similar to what Val was just saying, who have volunteered for our campaign, and I've actually been going door to door really to tell their story about how they've been isolated, and they've been bullied for refusing to admit that they're oppressors and that they're privileged and that they're inherently racist. They refused to conform to what the teacher wanted them to say, and they're being ostracized, and their grades are actually being affected because of it. We as adults can't even agree on CRT and equity in regards to their meaning and their importance. And if we can't figure it out, I don't really understand how we can teach it to others. Teaching our students to find, interpret, and analyze data for the purposes of drawing logic-based conclusions is the only skill that will ultimately allow them to properly frame CRT and equity as a conversation. And I would say if you really want to have this conversation, that's fine. Do it as a debate. So, you know, have the students outline their positions and then force them to argue from the other side. There's a lot of importance in making someone do research on something that they don't already believe in and making them, you know, become a little more well-rounded. And they may not agree with it at the end, but at least they'll have a better understanding of someone else's opinion. And that type of learning will at least help them grow as a person, as opposed to just reinforce existing opinions.
Okay. All right, Megan.
I do think that opposing viewpoints can definitely be taught in the classroom, but once again, not the one-sided way. And also, we need to go back and remember, we are kindergarten through 12th grade. This is not a college that we're looking at. So some of these topics are really meant for college students or actual adults. These are young kids who don't understand real life yet. And I feel like bringing these topics in the classroom is, once again, being divisive by separating them from their peers if they have a different opinion. And it becomes what is popular, and oh, you're the outcast now. And that's now opening a whole new can of worms as to another problem with bullying. And it's just a trickle-down effect, and I just think that it's not going to end well. If it continues down this path, something has to change.
Okay, thank you. We're going to do one more question on that, and you might have touched on this, but I'm going to ask it anyway because it was a question that came in. "What is your definition of critical race theory? I know, Craig, that was something you brought up in your response. And how is it different than equity? Because we throw those words around a lot, and I definitely know what you mean by the definition thing." Who wants to go first? You got the mic, Megan.
Yeah, that's fine. Yep. Okay, here we go. CRT. So in my opinion, doing my research, what I'm getting is that everything stems back to racism. Whites are oppressors and blacks are oppressed. This way of teaching is dangerous because you will start pinning students against each other. Most adults can't handle this topic, so how could we expect young minds to handle this? Teaching children that they can't go as far as their peers because of the color of their skin is setting them up for failure. We need to talk these kids up. Wilson has opportunities for everyone, which will allow all students to go very far in life. Sorry. I think that's it. We're good.
Okay. And you touched on how it's different than equity, I guess.
Wait, equity is actually, yeah.
There's two parts of the question.
Yeah, second part of the question. I'm sorry. I got mixed up in my papers here.
That's okay, no problem. How is it different than equity?
When we're talking about equity, you're thinking more equal. So equity is going to allow anyone based on their, it doesn't matter the color of their skin, their gender, their learning abilities, or their disabilities. They all have the same opportunity. That is equity. It's allowing all students to be able to participate in anything that Wilson has available. That would be the equity. I think the equity policy somehow is just kind of absorbing the CRT stuff, and it's becoming just a white and black thing when there are so many other nationalities in our school districts. And I think those two terms are getting confused amongst many people. I know I was definitely confused at first, so that is, yeah. It's definitely a heavy topic, but I encourage everyone to research it a little more and just, you know, ask us any questions if you have, or if you need help finding information, let us know.
Okay. Okay, Craig.
I mean, the definition is pretty available if anybody wants to look it up. I mean, it's essentially a 1970s legal theory that came out. And if you want to look it up, I think anyone can. But the idea that racism is everywhere and that's ingrained in the fabric of our society is really what it comes down to. White people are inherently racist or oppressors because of the system that they live in, and all other races are held down or oppressed because they're not white. I have a lot of problems with this, and I can't get into all of them in two minutes. But some of the main ones that I really want to call out is, one, this came from the 1960s. It was developed in the 70s, but really it was an offshoot from the civil rights movement in the 60s. This theory has not evolved in the last half century to reflect any of our societal changes, you know, changes in attitudes, you know, progress that we've made. And that's, it's really hard to live this society through that lens. This theory proposes a problem, but it doesn't even attempt to solve it. We're supposed to admit that we're victims or victimizers regardless of our personal histories or actions. And that is never a good thing psychologically to just stew in an issue. It's inherently racist and divisive. It pits people against each other based on the color of their skin, which I can't fathom why anyone would think that's a good thing. It's been denounced repeatedly by modern scholars and philosophers who regularly state that it has a value as a thought exercise, but it's utterly destructive from an educational standpoint. It intentionally ignores any data that contradicts it, such as poverty in the white population and justices against white immigrants like the Italians or the Irish,
30 seconds.
Positive movement and racial integration over the last 50 years. And finally, it intentionally ignores that the most successful, we are the most successful multicultural nation in the history of the world, which is bothersome to me. We're just throwing out all of our progress because it's convenient right now. Just to go down to equity, I know I'm out of time here, but the problem with equity, and I think a lot of people have seen this recently, is the word equity and equity in education, while I don't know that that's necessarily what our administration means when they talk about equity, has absolutely been hijacked as part of the critical race theory movement. And whether or not you agree with that, it's hard to separate the two now, you know, without completely dividing your society. So I could go on for hours, Brad.
No problem, but I have to stop you. My clock says stop him. Sorry, that's just the way it works. So, yeah, so the same question you, Val. And just remember, it's kind of a two-part. It's the critical race theory definition of that, and how does it differ from equity?
Sure. So from my research, I have come to the conclusion that critical race theory, basically, it's a theory that implies everything is inherently racist. And the color of your skin determines if you are an oppressor or oppressed without any consideration of an individual's experiences. I also think critical race theory teaches that opportunities are not available or extremely difficult to come by for people of a specific race, while opportunities are simply handed to or easy to come by to people of another race. And that's just wrong because there is no absolute on almost anything in life. There are individuals with varying experiences, backgrounds, work ethics, financial capabilities, learning abilities, et cetera, of all races. And there are plenty of examples today of people from all races who have come from nothing and have worked really hard their whole lives to become successful, and now they have a lot more than they started out with. Now, equity, on the other hand, I think, to me, that means you create opportunities for all, regardless of those differences. And I think we can absolutely work towards creating equal educational and social opportunities without critical race theory until, you know, eliminate components of critical race theory. You know, I think there should be some guidelines developed, you know, on topics that should not be allowed in lesson plans of certain, you know, non-civics or political science classes.
30 seconds.
That's all.
Just in time. Good job. Good job. All right, so we're going to move on to another topic here. This has to do with your position as you're hoping to be a school board member. And the question was, what are your views on board transparency? And how would you demonstrate that if elected? You might as well just go ahead, Val, because you have the microphone.
I'll take that one. So I think transparency is extremely important to allow us to work with the community. That, again, like I said in my opening statement, that should be a priority for any elected official. If we can't have conversations between board members and community members, then it's very difficult to work towards solutions to problems together. I'd like to see, you know, bios and pictures of every board member on the Wilson site. I think that would help a lot. I'd also like to see board members engaging more in the public comment in a positive way, you know, rather than just sitting there, maybe actually, you know, asking the public, well, what are some solutions that you may have thought of to this problem? And how can we work together to figure out a solution? Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Craig.
Yeah, and I will say that we rarely get to see true debate or discussion with the current board. Questions asked in the public meetings by them are usually pretty surface level. Also, it can be kind of difficult to determine what is coming up before the board. Oftentimes, we don't get notifications regularly telling us that there are new documents available. Sometimes we don't see the agenda until the day of the meeting, sometimes just hours before. So there's a lot of technical things that can be resolved that can help people feel like they have more access to information with what the board has seen. I definitely don't want to pass judgment on the board, as I've never walked in their shoes. But the general feeling a lot of times is that decisions are already made prior to the board publicly discussing something, as if they've already had this meeting, and now they're just doing it for show. We don't really hear a lot of thoughts and opinions from our board members. Even this debate designed to have candidates answer the public's questions was not attended by any of the incumbents. A few things that I would like to see, I would really propose more town hall style meetings where the public can engage with the board and the administration. We had one of those this year, and I think it was very productive. More debates, and the board wasn't there, but the administration was, and I appreciated it. I'd like to see more debates like this, that we can understand what the board's opinions are on topics as they shift regularly, as well, you know. And I really would very much like to see the board allow and the administration allow answering of questions at the board meetings. I mean, even if it's just written questions that they answer, they get ahead of time and they answer just so the public has an opportunity to get some feedback. It's not a one-way conversation like it is now, where you stand up, you make a comment, and then you sit down and nobody says a word. I have some other suggestions too, but I really just would like to see the board being a lot more active in the community, not feeling separate from it as it kind of does now.
Okay. Megan, you remember the question, right?
Transparency is very important. I don't think that the board has been very transparent, and I think that's how we got to this point. I think a lot of people are fed up, and they don't know what's going on. And after numerous meetings, I still haven't heard any statements really from any of them or the administration to really address what solutions are being made to the parents' concerns. And I think there's a disconnect there, and I think that needs to be, you have to think of, the board's almost the middleman. You have to think the parents voted us in. They want to be heard. Even community members want to be heard. And then we're taking it to the administration, all these executive sessions, and then not even discussing what was brought up in those sessions. It's not good. Secrets, you know, it's not getting us anywhere, and I think a lot of us have had enough. I know that's why I'm running, so I'm just done with this. So, thank you.
She's being very, very honest. Okay, so we have three more questions, and we're going to go to the, this is one of the last three here. So what we'll do is we'll go right back to Val, kind of go back down to that way and then come back through again. And this is, I guess, is a question again from the community. This is a different topic. It says, "Do you denounce kinetic faith in that organization's calls for violence?"
Yeah, so I actually had no knowledge whatsoever of kinetic faith until about three weeks ago. I still don't really know a whole lot about them, other than what I learned from a Google search. I will say that I don't think that violence is ever the answer to any problem. So I certainly don't ever encourage or promote or agree with that. But I guess I also don't think that this question is really relevant to anything we are trying to accomplish here. I'm not here for myself, and I'm not here to represent any organization. I'm here because I have two toddlers that will be students in the school district very soon. I have nieces, a nephew, and cousin who are already students in the school district. And I'm concerned that some of the things we've been seeing are going to influence them into their adulthood in a negative way. So I'm here for them, and I don't know much about that organization, but that's the reason I'm here. Thank you.
Craig?
All right. A little bit different. I have run into kinetic faith a few times over the last six months or so. I don't really know them specifically, but I know they've showed up at some events, and I've met some of their principals. I have no knowledge of any calls for violence by any of the organizations that are involved in this campaign across Berks County. I haven't seen any of that. What I would say is that if there is a call for violence, that's for the authorities to deal with. I would absolutely report it. And if it's legitimate, you know, I have 100% support the men and women in blue who protect us, and I know they'll do their job. As far as denouncing kinetic faith specifically, I don't denounce any organization, especially not one that invests time, money, and effort into trying to support our local community. There are multiple groups out there that are at odds with each other, and I've met with numerous of them. Some I agree with, some I don't, and that's fine. But as a candidate, I kind of feel it's my job, or maybe all of our jobs, to engage in positive discourse and not negative denouncements. Cancel culture is rampant right now, and much like CRT, it is very divisive. I kind of make a call right now to everyone that's on this call for unity. Maybe there is no need to start canceling people or getting more divisive. Instead, instead of going that direction and spreading anger and divisiveness, just reach out and try for understanding. You know, it's been my experience that we all have much more in common than we think. The only thing stopping us from reaching understanding is our own unwillingness to try. And I would even say, while I don't have a strong personal relationship with kinetic faith, if anybody, whoever wrote this question or anybody agrees with that, would like somebody to mediate a meeting, I would offer my services. That way, maybe you guys can find something in the middle.
Okay. Megan?
Thank you. I don't support any organization that calls for violence, and I wasn't aware what kinetic faith was until I actually saw this question. I was not in the loop with any of this, and I had no idea what was going on. And I wasn't aware what connect faith was until I actually saw this question. I was not in the loop with any of this and I had no idea what was going on. Bouncing off of one thing that Val said, we're here running, we have a purpose for this campaign. We're not an organization that is looking to come at anyone. So I think some things are getting twisted around and I, I think we're here for the good. I don't think any of us are choosing violence. So I just, yeah, I'm really sorry that I, I don't have more information on kinetic faith. And that's, yeah, unfortunate. Sorry. Thank you.
Okay, no problem. Um, we're going to go to the second last question. We'll guess Craig sent some mics in front of you. We'll just, we'll start with you on this. And, and this is a totally different topic. What is your view on fiscal responsibility? And I'm assuming this is coming up because there's a rumor that there are, are taxes. I live in Wilson also, just so you know. So I, there's a rumor there's tax increase coming. So I'm sure that's where this is coming from. So what's your view on fiscal responsibility?
I, I imagine that's the same, Brad. I mean, I think they voted a 5.6% increase this year.
I, I, I believe.
Yeah. So I mean, that's, but regardless, fiscal responsibility has got to be one of, one of the key things that a school board member is responsible for. I don't, I don't know if you're aware of this, but we are obviously a predominantly rural county in Berks and we have the second highest county taxes of any county in Pennsylvania. And I've heard comments from the Wilson administration saying that we're in the bottom half of the districts in our county, but I gotta be honest, the way I hear that is that we are kind of the best of the worst in fiscal responsibility. I don't know that that's nearly as powerful as they think it is. High taxes hurt all of us, but especially the ones of us that are the most needy. When taxes go up, monthly mortgages rise, rents go up, cost of goods go up. I mean, for a family making a hundred thousand dollars, maybe it can be absorbed fairly easily, but for a family making $35,000 a year, I mean, that can be the difference between a kid getting breakfast or, you know, a, a million other things that they might have to give up because their rent's going to get, go up a hundred dollars a month or something. Actually, I had a friend move into the district from Scranton a couple of years ago, and she was blown away by how high rent was. And after she did her investigation, she determined that the reason it was so much higher here than there was predominantly because of taxes. There is never going to be a shortage of people who are willing to spend our money. Everyone has an idea and we all think our idea is the best. And, and finding balance between cost and return on investment is critical to making sure that we provide a competitive environment for our students while also being good financial stewards of the district. Uh, I've spent my entire career running and managing businesses and I have experience with running multimillion dollar budgets. And I absolutely plan to bring that experience and knowledge to bear on behalf of the district.
Thank you. I think it goes, either way, it doesn't matter. You pick.
Having a budget and sticking to it is key. Borrowing money or increasing taxes isn't the answer. I think having a proper allocated spending amount for all categories, for anything that could come up with the school district would help ensure that money will be there when needed. We need to keep track of the money that is spent and use it wisely. There's money there, but it's not an endless amount. And I agree with Craig, you know, this affects everyone, not even just people who have kids in the school district and the elderly who are paying their property taxes. They cannot continuously see an increase in this. So I just think we just need to be a little wiser where the money is going. Okay. Thank you.
So I was actually really excited to see this question because I'm a financial advisor. So it's.
So this is right up your alley. This is it. Yeah.
This is totally on my, my wheelhouse here. So it, it's my job to teach my clients how to be responsible with their finances. And it pains me to see how much government entities and institutions abuse spending every single day. I think I would love to see most of Wilson's money going more towards ways to create more of those equal opportunities that we're talking about with the equity task force. For those that need more help in their education, and that should be the, the first and foremost priority. I think if, if we focus more on, uh, more funding on raising the bar on our educational achievement for all, I think that would naturally attract more families into the community, which would then create demand for more housing. And therefore a natural increase in school tax dollars. So we wouldn't necessarily have to have such a drastic tax increase. You know, like everyone mentioned, the 5.6% in this last year. And while Craig was talking, it made me think about something else, you know, with the clients that I work with, I have a wide range. Just like with the schools, I, you know, people have a wide range of financial capabilities. So I know a lot of clients of mine who have stated time and time again, that the school taxes are, are really putting a huge burden on their finances.
Thirty seconds.
And so, you know, that affects them. And I worry for them that they're not going to be able to stay, you know, living in the community. And then it also, you know, affects, you know, just like Craig was saying, you know, students who are in families that, that can't necessarily afford to take on that extra amount as the increases come every year. So, thank you.
Thank you. I can tell that was your topic because it was the only time I had to cut you off almost. You were getting wordy in your topic.
Yes.
No, everybody answered that question, am I right? We all answered the fiscal response. Okay, just making sure. Okay. So then this is the last question. We do have one question that came in from our audience. Uh, so we'll get to that. But I'm going to ask you the last question, then believe, and then remember you're going to have a time for closing comments too, where you can, uh, say your last things that are on your mind that you can bring up. Uh, here's the last question. If elected, will the candidates look to implement change on how the board opts not to answer directly to comments from the public?
I'll start.
Microphone's there.
Yep. So I think, and, and Craig kind of touched on this on an earlier question. I think it would be great to have meetings designed to be more of a conversational setting during that public comment portion, um, rather than what we're seeing now, which is community members talking at the board and no response. E- even if that, that conversation is simply a board member saying, you know what, I don't know enough about that, or the, I will look into that and get back to you and actually have a plan to communicate an answer to that question. You know, I think that would go a really long ways to rebuild the trust between the school board and the community. Thank you.
Okay. Craig, you want to take that since it's right there?
Yeah, you actually cracked me up with that because we have a saying at my office, which is sometimes the best answer is, I don't know, but I'll find out and get back to you. I, I don't think that, we, we seem to have a, a fear factor going on here with the current board. They, uh, they seem to shy away from, from direct public interaction. And maybe part of that is our fault. You know, we've, we've been at a lot of meetings and speaking and maybe there's, there's intimidation there. And if that's the case, you know, we definitely want to address that as well, but we can't stop communicating. It is all about making sure that, that the, the board is just our neighbors. They're just people like us. You know, they're, they're not some, you know, crazy high, sitting on a mountaintop judging over all of us. They're just people. And if we can't communicate with the people we entrust to make decisions on behalf of our children, then we've already failed as a community. I, I, I agree with Val and I know that we've both kind of been parroting this, but, um, we really need to get more public discourse going to the meetings. If, if not in the meetings, then outside the meetings, but somehow bringing, bridging that gap between the community, the parents and the board and the administration, which seems to be getting wider every single month. I would, I would fully support allowing the public to ask general questions of the board, the administrators and, and giving them an opportunity to answer. And it doesn't mean that they have to know the answer. And it, it doesn't mean that they have to be, you know, 100% spot on every time, you know, it's, but it at least shows us that they're engaged and that they care and gives them an opportunity to find the answer and get back to us. And I think that's important.
Okay.
Thank you. I would absolutely make a change. Um, other school boards in Berks County actually do allow that. They allow the open discussion. I think it helps the parents feel heard. By responding right away, some of the questions might get answered that night, or it leaves room for further discussion after the meeting is over. The end goal should always be to find a solution that meets the needs of the district. And I think that when you're having a conversation back and forth, you are going to get there faster than with just complete silence. Thank you.
All right. So we do have another question and I think we, you know, we only got one question. So I think we should definitely ask the question, you know? Somebody's watching here and actually presented this question. So I think we should, I was a little concerned because my laptop battery is starting to get low. But I think we're going to be okay. I'm at 29%. I think I'm good. And my, my power cord's up in the office, up upstairs here. So, um, if you see sweat on my brow, it's because of the, the battery. But no, so we're going to ask this question. I think we're going to be fine here. Um, it's, there's a, there's a question that came in. And this is the question, current events in politics influence the arts, particularly literature. Do you feel comfortable censoring the books children read in language arts? So we'll do what we did before, two minutes.
I can start.
This is an off the cuff question. We did not have this ahead of time. So just keep on.
I don't think we should limit what our children read as far as if it's pertaining, if it follows the curriculum. And if it's, you know, appropriate enough for the age group of the children, I don't think that we should remove books necessarily, um, as long as they meet all the guidelines of the district. And like I said, pertain to the kid's age, um, certain books should obviously not be in elementary school, same with middle school and high school even. There are certain books that are just not appropriate for grades K through 12. Thank you.
Awesome. If you need me to, uh, ask the question again, I can, since you didn't.
No, no, no. You are, you are fine. And, uh, and I think, I think Megan kind of nailed it. I, I think that we do look at literature right now at, at an age appropriate is, is kind of the, the core of how we determine who gets, what gets recommended to which level of student. And, and I think that is really what drives what's appropriate. Something that may be fine for an 11th or a 12th grader may certainly be wildly inappropriate for a sixth grader. And, uh, and I think that there are going to be topics, and there are always going to be topics that are going to rise, raise eyebrows and, and garner debate. And when that happens, I think it's more important that we have the discussion than it is that we just ban the book or just blindly allow it. And, and this should be something that is brought up. We should not be leaving it up to, to someone else. If there's a debate about a, a specific topic or a specific artist or a specific, you know, genre, whatever it may be, but blindly banning books is never the solution either. So like everything else, you know, the, the world lives in the gray and, uh, and that would be kind of where this would be as well, in my opinion.
Okay. Val?
Okay. So, um, I, I'm kind of on the same page in that I don't think we should necessarily ban any books and that, you know, it has to be developmentally appropriate for the age level that you're presenting that option to. I also think that if, if you're going to, I guess, incorporate books that represent current events, I don't necessarily have a problem with that. As long as you are, um, attempting to present different viewpoints with those books. If it's all one-sided, that, then I have an issue with that. But if, if the students can choose from, you know, a group of books and, you know, they can make their own judgments from that, then that's fine. Um, I just don't want to see, you know, a specific type of current event being, you know, I guess, influenced one way or the other. So, thank you.
Good. I think that's it. So, um, we're going to wrap it up. Uh, as we had said in the beginning, we're going to give two minutes to each candidate for closing comments. Uh, and I want to thank the three of you for being here. I want to thank everybody that's, uh, on this Zoom call right now for being here. Uh, it's much appreciated. People took time to listen to your answers. So I think that's awesome. But yeah, if you could give your two-minute, uh, closing statement, that would be great. And whoever wants to go first, Val, if you want to start or whatever, it's fine.
Sure. I'll go first. Um, again, I just want to thank you, Brad, for moderating for us. We probably made it pretty easy on you, but.
It's really tough for me not to comment though. I'll tell you that much.
And I want to thank everyone who took out time on a Sunday evening to, you know, be on the Zoom call and listen to our answers to these questions. It's very important. I, I just want to say that from the canvassing that we've done in the community so far, I think overall we've had a lot of positive response and really great conversations with community members and suggestions. And, and that's what this should be all about. Um, we should be able to have that two-sided conversation and come up with solutions to problems together. And that's not what we're seeing right now. So, again, the, the main reasons I'm running, um, you know, I, I, I fear for the future of my children in the school district, and I just want to do my part, whatever I can to ensure that, um, you know, they're, they're getting a good education and they're not being influenced in a way that, um, you know, is, is, you know, just unfair. So, thank you so much.
Okay.
Much like Val said, thank you, Brad. Thank you, everyone for coming out. We really appreciate it. I, I do want to bounce back to one topic that I think we might've blasted through a little bit here, which is, um, the equity policy, which I know is, is a big topic right now. And the only thing I want to say on that, I don't want to get too deep into it, but what I have found interesting over the last, you know, couple of months, we have a tremendous amount of data points that are already collected at the, the district level. And even at the state level, but specifically at the district, district level that point to very real things that we can solve right now. And I have some very, very real concerns over a broad sweeping equity policy that puts no limitations on financial burden. It puts no limitations on the scope within the, the, the school's scope within the family, the school's scope within the classroom as it, as it enforces this. And I'm generally speaking, not a big fan of blanket policy. But I do think that there are some equitable challenges that we have at Wilson that we are very well poised to, to deal with now. If we were to get a little bit more focused on what we want to do and actually help real kids that are, that are dealing with real issues. So, you know, I would personally love to see a move away from equity as a general concept and move more towards isolating students that would benefit from a more equitable solution and drafting more specific policy just to help specific student classes, student groups. And I think that would show us more results and allow us to better refine our, our goals. So thank you everyone so much. It's, it's, it's been an honor. Thank you, Brad.
Thank you, Brad, and thank you for everyone who is watching and for your questions and for allowing us time to speak. I am once again running because of my kids. My boys mean everything to me and their peers do as well. I love their friends and I want them all to have the best chance that they can possibly have. And we have to look back, Wilson is a good school. I, at some point it got a little off track, but we truly have a good district here. We have great teachers. I think that we can find a solution just to get, you know, on the right page and get everyone back together with some more unity here. So, thank you, everyone.
Okay, great. And one other thing I want to say is, um, there was one board member that was in attendance, uh, here, and we want to thank him. Bob Schneider was in attendance, uh, during the whole thing. We want to thank him for being here. He took the time out of his night to, to be here and we want to just say thanks. Okay. I think that's going to make it for the night, guys. So, um, I guess, good night, everybody.
All right. Thank you, Brad.
Bye. Thank you.